Good evening councillors and officers and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is Councillor Lena Messina, I'm the Mayor of Darabben City Council and the Chairperson of tonight's planning meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome you all this evening. This meeting will be held virtually and will be closed to the public in the interest of health and safety of the public, councilors and staff. I declare this meeting open at six forty P M. Officers, can you please submit the submitters for the evenings, this evening's meeting?
Ma'am Messina, that's everyone admitted to the meeting.
Thank you, and that's five submitters tonight, can I just confirm that they're all present?
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you, welcome to our submitted this evening. As you have been advised, please keep your camera and microphone off. And when we get to the point of the meeting where you make your submissions, I'll invite you by name to turn your camera and audio on and address the planning committee meeting for three minutes. Thank you and welcome again. Item number one, welcome, Darabben City Council acknowledges the Wondry Warren people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land and waters we now call Darabben and pays respects to our oldest past, present and emerging. Council pays respect to all other Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander communities in Darabben. Council recognise and pays tribute to the diverse culture, resilience and heritage of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. We acknowledge the leadership of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander communities and their right to self-determination in the spirit of mutual understanding and respect. The health and safety and wellbeing of the community has and will always be paramount consideration of the council. Council continues to be guided by the government directives and wants to be able to do the right thing for the health and our, health of our community during the COVID nineteen pandemic. This meeting is being held virtually. Should technical problems be encountered by council, the meeting may be adjourned until these are resolved with a maximum of thirty minutes. And if we cannot resolve the problem, we will reschedule the meeting. In such circumstances, an advice message will be shown on our screen. This meeting is being livestreamed and by a link on the council website, so the public will be able to view the proceedings of the meeting. The meeting is also being recorded and will be made available on the council website as soon as practical after the meeting. There are a few housekeeping matters and technical tips for councillors that I need to pass on. Please leave your video on and mute your sound unless you are asked to speak, unless you wish to speak actually. If you wish to electronically raise, raise your hand, hover over the participants button in the main video window and then press the small hand symbol in the right hand corner. Please use this if you wish to ask a question or leave the meeting. Alternatively, can you please put your hand in front of you because sometimes you don't get to see that hovering of the raising of the hand and then I'll actually grab your attention by having that in the process. Note that there is no chat facility available during the meeting for councillors or general viewers. At Darabben, we pride ourselves on being a progressive and contemporary council. In the interest of demonstrating leadership, I have high expectations that we'll be professional in our conduct throughout the evening and respectful in our debate. Chamber is both a workplace and a public space and we have an obligation to ensure that the working environment and the public forums are safe for everyone, both emotionally and physically. Item number one, membership. Before we commence, I'd like to introduce the councillors and the senior staff who are with us this evening and to confirm councillors can see and hear each other. I'm going to call out the names of councilors or as I see on the screen. So councillor Demetri Artis, welcome and good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Councillor Suzanne Newton.
Good evening, Mayor and everybody.
Councillor Susan Rennie.
Good evening all.
Councillor Tom Hannan.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, councillor Trent McCarthy.
Good evening, Mayor and good evening, everyone.
Councillor Gaetano Greco.
Good evening, Mayor and hello to everyone else.
Good evening, councillor Julie Williams.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, and our officers present tonight, we have Vanessa Petrie, who's the Acting General Manager of City Sustainability and Strategy, Catherine Pound, who's the Manager of City Development, Chad Griffiths, Manager of City Futures. Is Chad in the, with us this evening?
Mayor, Chad will join us when his item comes up.
Thank you, Stevie, is Stevie present? No, is Joel present? No, sorry, I've got different list, oh yes you are, good evening Joel, sorry. Good evening, sorry, I've just got a different list in front of me. Okay, I guess we can get on the way, apologies, note that councillor Tim Lawrence is not available this evening. Item number three, disclosures of conflict of interest, are there any conflicts to disclose? Councillor Newton.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I've got a conflict for the Smith Street item and I'll declare that when we come to it.
Note, you have a, you have a conflict of interest for item number five point two, application for planning permit for two O five Smith Street, noted, thank you councillor. Are there any further conflict of interest to declare? Noted, thank you councillors. Item number four, confirmation of minutes previous meeting. Councillors, could I please have a motion for the adoption of minutes of the planning committee held on the ninth of May twenty twenty two? Moved by councillor Williams. Thank you, I can't, I can't see who's seconding that, councillor Suzanne, Susan, sorry, Susan Rennie. Thank you, all those in favour? Thank you, that's passed unanimously. Item number five, consideration of reports. Item five point one is the application for planning permit D dash three O two dash two O two one, One Wardrop Grove, Northkitt. Councillors, item number five point one relates to application for planning permit D three O two, three O two dash two O two one, One Wardrop Road Grove, sorry, Northkitt. I ask the officers who will be addressing the item.
Thank you, ma'am Messina, I will present this item this evening. Yeah, this is a planning application at number one Wardrop Grove in Northkitt, it's on the, on the western side of the street there. It has a lane running along its southern boundary, so that's a council managed right of way. That property is subject to some planning controls, notably the general residential zone schedule number two. It's also subject to what's called a design and development overlay, schedule fourteen. But it also forms part of the wider Northkitt Activity Centre, which principally encompasses, you know, the main high street spine, but also the hinterland residential areas, including this particular property and the surrounding streets. This application comes, is a second application in recent times for this property. Initial application came to council and was actually decided upon by the tribunal, the Victorian Civil and Administrative Tribunal. Now, in that decision, there was some issues raised around the provision of garden spaces for that earlier design. The materials utilised in that design, the form, the emphasis of the balconies to the design of that earlier proposal, the front setback and some of the visual impact of that development. The applicants come back following that decision and there's a long decision that's been set down by the tribunal that touches on all those issues. And this new development that we have before us this evening seeks to address those issues. Now, this new design is similarly for four dwellings. It's, it's two, it's three stories, now the uppermost level is within a roof form, as you'll notice on the plans. Each dwelling has three bedrooms and a retreat and a study space. And each dwelling has access to two onsite car parking spaces, which they will be accessing via that adjacent right of way to the south. Each dwelling is, has a ground level living space, so they have their, their backyards immediately adjacent those spaces either facing north or northwest. And the maximum height of this development is just, just over ten, ten metres to the, to the peak of the roof pitch. Now, in response, I suppose, to those VCAT or that earlier decision, the revised design is different. The materials are different, so it's, it's more a brick construction, whereas the earlier design was more of a colour bond cladding material that was heavily used in the earlier design that VCAT did oppose. The balconies, which were very deliberate in the earlier design and a much more of a sort of an inset look within the roof form and they continue to be on the southern side, they're not on the northern side, so facing that right of way. The setbacks increased to the street by one metre, so it's now eight metres, not seven. Dwelling four, that's remodelled, so it doesn't have a north facing rear garden, it, it's more of a northwest facing rear garden. So as a result, dwelling four in particular is quite different because it's set back substantially or far more than it was in that early design. There are some better landscaping opportunities along that rear boundary as a result of that change to dwelling four and it's clearer to me on the plans when comparing that there's better landscaping adjacent the right of way, which itself abuts other residential properties to the south. So it is, and this latest design this evening, it did receive four objections. Now, in finalising the assessment, the officers have looked at that earlier VCAT design and done a very detailed assessment of this latest design versus that earlier decision by the tribunals, as you'll see in the report. As a result, and officers have recommended approval, subject to conditions as you'll see in the report. What I'd like to also mention, in addition to the conditions you'll see this evening in that report, it's evident that the applicant would like to reconstruct the right of way because it's, although it is constructed at the minute, the quality of the surfacing perhaps could be improved, so they're willing to reconstruct that right of way. So I'm looking to introduce a new condition into the recommendation, which I can read out to you, which will address that, that right of way construction, so it'll ensure that that does actually happen. So prior to the occupation of the development, the applicant would be required to submit plans detailing the construction and surfacing and drainage of the right of way abouting the southern boundary of the property, commencing from the western end of the property and continuing east to the footpath with Wardrop Grove. Those plans then must be submitted to council for our approval and then the second part of that condition is the right of way must be surfaced in accordance with those plans and that the all works must be to the satisfaction of the responsible authority. So if you want to say that on the screen, I can show you, but that's, that's the wording that would be included in that additional condition should the recommendation be to approve, so this sort of let you know because that's quite important.
Thank you Joel, can I just ask, that becomes item number twenty, is that correct?
If I go back, let me just check.
Yeah, it's item number twenty.
Yeah, if, if.
Can I just confirm that what's on the screen is what you read out, it appears to me that way, I just want a confirmation.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you Joel. Do we have any questions? If I can go back to the gallery view, Rachna, and can I have councillors, are there any questions in regard, regards to this application? Councillor Greco.
Yes, hello, yeah, look, yeah, look, thank you for that presentation about the application. Just two questions, one question is, just in relation to the previous application that went to VCAT and that was then rejected because of the grounds that you've said. This is directed through the mayor to the officers, can we just get a bit of an overview in relation to the remaining items and aspects of the development? Does this application still address, if you like, VCAT's concerns? Is there any substantial variation from what was previously put to VCAT to what is now put to VCAT in relation to the matters that were not in dispute? That's the first question. And the second question is, I note that there were four objections to this particular application just for the benefit of councillors and also for the submitters and people watching. Generally, when, it's only when we get five objections and councillors call in an application. Can you just explain why in this particular case with four objections, why it has come before the council planning committee for the benefit of the, of who's listening to us, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, ma'am Messina, I'll seek to answer the first question. As I mentioned in that presentation, yeah, the, the sort of the backdrop, I suppose, is the VCAT case. So the applicant had the challenge of, you know, considering it and then also dealing with the regular issues of the planning controls and the planning scheme. So the critical things that were changed, as I mentioned, were the fact that they've changed the design, so it's quite a different looking building. So the roof forms, et cetera, many of the, you know, the the amount of interplay depending different, different elevations is quite different, it's much more simplified. So elements of the built form are more sort of a vertical, there's less of the setbacks and the variation in the in the interplay between the different elevations. Material wise, it's much more, it's more of a brick building. Before, as I mentioned, it was much more of a, it wasn't plaited in sort of a colour bond material. But principally, most of the changes speak to the VCAT issues. Just trying to think of other changes that sit outside that, which was principally your question, but there probably aren't too many because fundamentally it is the same design in the sense it's a series of dwellings running down the block. They're utilising the right of way as the key access point, both for vehicles and pedestrians. But I suppose some of the changes, like the change to dwelling four wasn't explicitly called for by VCAT, but the applicant have chosen to do it in the way they have, perhaps in response to the context to the north, which is one, a driveway immediately adjacent that common boundary, but there's also an outbuilding, so dwelling four sits closer to that boundary. But I guess they've done that because they've had to pull off the rear boundary, which VCAT were concerned with around the visual bulk impact to that dwelling immediately to the west. So, yeah, when you look at that VCAT decision, they're not explicitly asking the applicant to do certain things, but they're certainly raising concerns. And in our assessment, the applicant's done a reasonable job of dealing with those issues. And if you go to the report, there's quite a bit of a summary, if you like, in the table, which mentions each individual issue and just how the applicant has addressed them.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I'll jump in and take the second question of councillor Greco, if that's okay. So councillor Greco, thank you for your question, it was in relation to why this item has come before the council planning committee. Any, any application may be called to the committee where there are two or more councillors make a written request to call an item in on the basis that there would be a broader interest of the community to be served by the committee considering the item, so in this case matters flagged were including in relation to car parking, the previous VCAT decision, the size of the development and overlooking, thank you councillor Greco.
Thank you, councillor Greco, do you have a supplementary question? No, okay, councillor Rennie.
Thank you, ma'am Messina, I just have a question in relation to waste. A note in the report that the waste management plan wasn't deemed satisfactory and therefore a private waste collection is proposed, that's a little unusual for a townhouse type development. Is there precedent for that and are there alternatives? Because I don't feel it is particularly satisfactory that we move into a scenario where private waste collection is occurring for townhouses, mainly because we get poor environmental outcomes.
Through you, ma'am Messina. It is unusual, normally this, you know, we do rely on the council's waste services for developments of this scale. But sometimes, you know, when we're managing waste, it is beneficial to utilise a private service, particularly where access is a concern or we've got other issues around, you know, the volume of waste that needs to be collected and the volume of kind of space needed to store the waste bins and so on. So through and discussions with the applicant, I understand that was the arrangement that was entered into, was to allow this particular development to rely on, on private waste. But I take your point, it isn't, isn't the normal course of events or the approach for this scale of residential development.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Thank you, there have been no further questions, we'll now move to the hearing of submissions. Councillors, we have four submitters this evening, three objectors and one applicant who wish to address the planning committee tonight. Can I please ask Genevieve McMahon, who's an objector, to please unmute herself and come onto camera, welcome and good evening, Genevieve.
Welcome, good evening Mayor and councillors and others. Okay, I'm presenting on behalf of my husband Anthony Kelly myself about the proposed development at One Wardrop Grove at the rear of our property at twenty nine Mitchell Street. I recognise and appreciate the fact that many of our original concerns have been addressed with the redesign, but I continue to be concerned that development is an overdevelopment of the site rather than a modest degree of infill. I am particularly concerned about the lack of dedicated pedestrian walkway to access the re-dwellings. To my mind, pedestrians needing to share space with the cars fails to meet the stated council objective of the need to create human scale spaces that promote casual interaction enabling us. I also believe that it contradicts the assertion in clause fifty five point zero three slash seven that the development has not resulted in the creation of unsafe spaces, because I think the right of way has a potential to be very unsafe. That particularly concerns me from a professional point of view as well as a personal point of view, because I work with people with quad brain injuries from brain, from car accidents, so I think it has a potential to be unsafe. The particular right of way is narrow and very steep, it's got about a one in ten incline and currently has rough uneven surface of patched concrete, which is very different to the glossy pictures in the architectural diagrams, which I understand tonight is, is the developers undertaken to address. I have experience, it's very challenging to walk down, particularly at night or in wet weather, as it's dark and slippery underfoot. It's currently unused by our one car to access our garage, but the proposed development would mean it's accessed by nine cars plus the residence of the three rear dwellings, which is a huge increase in usage and those rear dwellings have no other alternative access to their buildings. While access for able-bodied pedestrians is difficult in the current conditions, it would be really challenging for pedestrians with prams, for small children, people with shopping or people with mobility restrictions. It's also, and I think this is raised by councillor Rennie's question, problematic for people taking bins to and from Wardrop Grove to collection because it is very steep. In the VCAT ruling, safety concerns in relation to Wardrop Grove were disregarded due to the assessment of the relatively small number of vehicles in the street. While that's true some of the time, particularly during the COVID lockdowns when the assessment was made, Wardrop Grove is often very busy due to sanitary traffic and will only become busier when the new developments completed. There's also a blind spot coming out of the right of way into Wardrop Grove due to the brick garage at the southern entrance of the right of way, which, which can sort of result in close encounters on many occasions. And I note development that tonight, that there's been net assurance for the developer to develop the right of way. I wanted to make the, get some sort of reassurance that the council will take responsibility, provide adequate lighting, paving and safety features to allow safe passage of cars and pedestrians in the right of way and Wardrop Grove. If not, yeah, I wanted to make sure that the developer was required to take responsibility. And to be an asset to the area, the right of way needs to constitute a pedestrian friendly street as per the neighbourhood character guidelines, rather than somewhere that future residents fear to use due to risk of slipping, fear of being by a car or coming down or sanitary students being hit by a car on the way to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve, thank you. I now invite Pam Morton, who's an objector, to please turn her microphone on and her camera on. And good evening again Pam, and I'll invite the timekeeper to perhaps start the clock at three minutes Pam.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the planning committee for the opportunity to address you this evening. I take the opportunity just to remind councillors that we've been at this place before and it was with great reluctance that we went to VCAT and had the previous decision overturned. I should have mentioned too that I'm representing my father, William Jackson. He is the owner of both three Wardrop Grove and twenty seven Mitchell Street, Northkitt, and both properties are severely impacted by this proposed development. I would submit that the new proposal is simply a pared down version of the, the original design that again fails to meet the requirements of the planning scheme and site specific requirements. The application again is based on a yield outcome and the focus has been on manoeuvring the application to comply with various design metrics, but it still, still fails to meet the essential requirements. And in particular, I'm referring to the low change residential zoning and design development overlay fourteen, which has a specific requirement for the maintenance of rear yards. And this was a key issue that was focused on in the VCAT decision, in the twenty twenty decision. The previous home on the site has now been demolished, but it originally had approximately thirty percent of the property as the rear garden. It also had a separate front yard and side garden areas. And the open space was consistent with all of the large open areas in the adjoining properties in both Wardrop Grove and Mitchell Street. We now have a proposal that, that celebrates a site total of thirty six percent, which when the consideration is based on a front yard area and small courtyards means that it is only probably nine percent of each unit in terms of the open space garden. Now, this is quite a deviation from a, a planning requirement that stipulates the maintenance of rear yards. The new proposal also remains a large continuous built form that runs effectively the length of the subject land and that sentence is a quote from the VCAT decision. Now, this detracts from the heritage building at three Wardrop Grove and twenty seven Mitchell Street is still overshadowed by an overly dominant building that detracts from the amenity of that property. I would strongly urge you to reject this proposal and to carefully reconsider the VCAT case because the planning report does not adequately address all of the individual requirements. I thank you for the opportunity to make this submission to you.
Thank you, Pam. I now invite Mark Stayen. Stayen.
Hi, and thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening, you have three minutes, Mark.
Thank you very much, first, I'm speaking on behalf of both eight and ten Wardrop Grove, following some consultation with them today. The key concerns from the, I'm at ten Wardrop Grove, the key concerns from the people at eight Wardrop Grove is that there was no proper advertising of the, the planning proposal. According to the site, it was listed on the fence, but we never received any communication in the mail. So we wanted to make sure that our voices were heard in the consultation process. And to put that in context, we first heard of the planning proposal on Sunday of this last week. So we obviously were quite late in putting forward our objections. The primary items that we objected. The primary items that we object to are that the the height of three stories to ten metres running up the hill would actually end up being much higher than that and cut off light to the properties on the other side of the road. And also, we believe, does not comply with the planning zone requirements from the front of the property to the back. Even though a height of ten metres was mentioned before, we understand that it should be measured from the front of the property to the back. So we would like for that to be confirmed. The second item that we were concerned of is parking. I think there's already been some discussion that parking is available, but we believe that it will continue to congest the street, which is incredibly congested at the moment. And particularly for waste services removal, it's very difficult for the trucks to get down. They have to back down the street. And in supporting of that, also, the most recent development that was approved next to Santa Maria's High School was required to put in underground car parking, which they have subsequently done and that excavation is complete. I'd also like to note at that point that within four hundred metres away from High Street from where this proposal is, there are no three-story either high-density or residential dwellings. So according to the VCAT statement, that would imply to me that it was out of character with the neighbourhood, which was also a key point that was raised during the VCAT proceedings. The final item raised by Pam and David at eight Wardrop Grove was that the design is not in keeping with the environment. And it is not that they're they're against modern buildings, but with three stories and three levels, they should be required to to excavate.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for your attendance this evening. I now like to invite Susuka on the, good evening, I will ask you to, yeah, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Okay, I'm Susuka, the town planner at CKRUs Architects. Our client, a family from Darabin for over fifty years, have worked with us and council every step of the process over the last four years. The goal is to provide smaller conscious housing, making Northkirk more affordable. Following the VCAT refusal, we worked with council to respond to each ground of contention. This was done both outside a formal lodgment and throughout the course of this application. The current proposal of four three-story dwellings received a total of five objections, excluding the last person that I heard because I wasn't notified, apologies. We provided an opportunity to meet and discuss the application with each objector. There was one who agreed and has since unconditionally withdrawn their objection. The density proposed balances the previous VCAT refusal grounds with the zone and the overlay. The height is lower, the form is domestic in scale and materiality. The front and rear setbacks allow for meaningful planting and harmony with the north adjoining heritage dwelling. The application also proposes to use the laneway south of the site for vehicle access. It improves upon the previous application from an ESD perspective by reaching a six point five star rating and commits to being gas-free, incorporates a two thousand litre rainwater tank for each dwelling, uses double glazed windows for all habitable room windows, incorporates solar panels for each dwelling, commits to installing energy efficient services internally. The owners and family are also willing to upgrade the laneway to ensure waste services access in and out of the laneway is safe, efficient and considered an improvement to its current condition. I'll also take you to the ground floor plans, just hearing what everyone's saying, where we've actually widened the inwards to where the garage is, so it actually increases your ability to turn safely in and out. The site sits in an eclectic part of Northkirk. North beyond the heritage lot, we have Santa Maria College and fourteen to sixteen Wardrop, where a two and three-story residential development has been approved for seven dwellings. Beyond the laneway south of the site, we also see twenty two Mitchell Street, where three-story attached dwellings has also recently been built. We ask councillors to consider the site in context of where it sits, the call for density via the zone and desire, desire, sorry, the zone, design and development overlay and changes in massing and form to approve the development subject to your conditions. I thank you for your time.
You see, councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Dimitri Artis. Your motion, please.
I'd like to move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Can I go back to gallery view so I can see all councillors? Do I have a second for this? Is there a second? Can I see hands? No, that is last, oh councillor councillor Greco, sorry. Councillor Dimitri Artis, would you like to speak to it?
Sorry, I'm just in a funny spot at the moment, but I wanted to reiterate that this has actually been approved by our plan, well, a planning team have reviewed this particular application quite carefully. They reviewed it twice. The first time they actually gave the authorised the permit and it was taken to VCAT by residents. This time that all those this time they've put in a new application, the application is actually coincides with what VCAT asked. And our officers are again recommending that we support this application. So I'm in support of it. I believe we've got less objectives, so there's four now, which technically probably shouldn't come to council. So I'm supportive of this application based on our officer's recommendation and the VCAT decision that it's been abided by.
Thank you, councillor Dimitri Artis. Councillor Greco.
May I reserve my right to speak? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further speakers? Councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move an amendment which would be point twenty, which relates to the laneway improvement. I believe that officers have that available as it was prepared by staff. So I seek the agreement of the mover and seconder to incorporate that if they're happy to do so.
What are the, can I just have? Can we highlight the amendments based on the revised officer's recommendation that councillor Rennie is highlighting? Saying stating that there is a further amendment. Can we have that from the from the officers, please, so that we have some clear guidance of what the changes are?
The point twenty is the amendment, so it's highlighted. So originally, officer recommendation had nineteen points and point number twenty is addition to officer's recommendation and that I think councillor Rennie's intention is to add this one.
Okay, all right. Sorry, thank you pardon councillor Rennie. I understood that what we were moving was the regional officer's recommendation with the item number twenty, which was what the officers had publicly had previously put up. So I apologize. So I'm assuming that's what councillor Dimitri Artis was moving. Councillor Dimitri Artis, is that what you initially moving? Can I just have some confirmation around that?
Yes, maybe, because that's what the officer said that that was, that if we do, if it was approved, it would actually include that item.
Thank you. Is that acceptable to the mover, to the seconder and the mover? Obviously, yes, councillor.
Yes, we are of the same understanding.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Thank you. Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to the to the motion?
Look, I will thank you, Mayor, and I confess I'm of two minds in relation to this application. I can see that considerable thought has been given to make it more compliant with the VCAT ruling. I am significantly concerned that there seems to be no way to better manage waste and that waste will be via a private waste collection service and I find that highly unsatisfactory in the context of a quiet residential street such as this places another truck in the street, it leads to poor outcomes. And if it's not possible to manage waste from a development of this size in such a way that in a quiet street we need private waste collectors, then that suggests to me that there's a problem at some point in the process. And I'm not sure whether that's with density and trying to actually fit too much in with bin size, with, you know, I don't actually know what the solution to that is. But I think it's a an undesirable precedent to have private waste collection for townhouse developments. I'm not sure whether there's a way to change that, but for me, you know, that makes me distinctly uncomfortable with the development that I think otherwise has quite a lot of merit in particular. I think that there are lots of families who would love to move into these type of family homes in this area. I'm also really mindful that last time, you know, we left it to residents to take something to VCAT and VCAT came ruled in favour of the points they made around neighbourhood character. And I think that you know, I take my hat off to those residents who weren't satisfied with the council recommendation and who challenged that through the processes available to them. And, you know, I think for that reason, we owe it to residents to to listen to their concerns here. But essentially, I don't think the density is the issue. It's the problems that it creates.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Do we have any further speakers? Oh, I noticed that Joel's got his hand up. So Joel, did you want to address something and then we'll go to councillor Hannan. I'm assuming you want to address the waste issue.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Messina. I just wanted to step in there and respect the point. I've had another look at the conditions. Now, there is a condition number nine within the recommendation which talks to the management of waste. We've also got advice more recently from our waste team and they've indicated that the development could accommodate eight council waste bins within the site comfortably to allow a council waste service to provide the waste services for the site. But there is a detailed condition number nine, which does go into all of the details around waste, which will be ratified in a in a waste management plan. Admittedly, there is a small chance that it still could be private. There is a sort of a section in that condition which talks to the possibility of private. But basically, based on more recent advice, it would appear that it could be serviced by council's waste services unit.
Thank you, Mr Boyle. That's very helpful for me.
Thank you. Councillor Hannan.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm sorry to say I'm not supportive of this amendment, of this motion. I do appreciate the goodwill that's been shown by the applicant to address the concerns raised by residents in the previous VCAT case, as well as ensuring that the laneway is maintained in good condition. I also appreciate that the thorough proposed conditions, which the Darabin council team have been working on to ensure high standards in relation to environment, safety, immunity, et cetera. Look, fundamentally, I'm just concerned there are too many units from this particular space. You know, four units of three stories on this particular space seems to me to be pushing the limits. The laneway, as has been described, is narrow and it's a dead end. It's not designed to take four units, each with potentially two cars as well as bikes, scooters and pedestrians, et cetera. There's a lack of garden space for each unit. I appreciate there's a large setback in the front yard, although it's not quite, I don't believe it's quite within council standards. And look, I appreciate the intention is to provide housing for the family and future generations. But it's quite possible the title will be subdivided in the future. And so then you're left with one property, one unit with a garden and three with very little garden space. I'm mindful of the precedent this will set for this area and other areas in Darabin. Yes, it's true, there are properties which have four units for same or similar number of units, or there are properties that have units with with three stories, but on this particular site with a dead-end, narrow laneway, I just don't, I don't think it's going to create sort of amenity that we would want for to see across Darabin.
Thank you, councillor Hannan. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rennie, I recognise that your hand is up. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco.
Thanks, Mayor Messina. Yeah, look, I've been inclined to support this application. As has been mentioned, I think that the applicant has duly dealt with the VCAT requirements in relation to the previous application and come back to us with an application that addresses the issues that were that were problematic, you know, the garden spaces, the materials that were used, the issues with the balconies and also in relation to the lane. I understand, yes, it's a three-story building, but it's three-story buildings are permitted within certain heights. But you could say that this is technically a three-story building, but what's interesting of this particular application is that the third story is well embedded in the roof of the building, which is a an innovative way to create more more living space whilst it's embedded in the roof. The other interesting thing of this application, I think that the applicant's gone some way in relation to meeting, not only meeting, but I would say surpassing our ESD standards. As was mentioned by the applicant's representative in regards to double glazing and all the other gas-free and all the other ESD standards that we are advocating for. And obviously, and some of them are beyond what is in our planning applications. That's a very positive thing. I believe I think it's a positive new response in relation to that site. And I believe that that the applicant has gone a long way in developing a proposal which which could be supportable. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? As there are no further speakers, I will put that all to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Messina, councillor McCarthy, councillor Greco, councillor William, councillor Newton, councillor Dimitri Artis, councillor Rennie. All those against? Thank you, councillors. The planning, the the planning committee has decided to support the application. It issued a notice of decision to grant a planning permit subject to conditions. This decision is not final. An objector can appeal the decision and the applicant can appeal any conditions at VCAT. The process of the appeal is subject to timeframes detailed on the documentation to be sent to the objector and the applicant. Thank you. Councillors, the next item on the agenda is item number five point two, application for planning permit D seven four two two O two O two O five Smith Street Thornbury and councillor Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a conflict on this item, so I live quite close to the subject area. So I'd like to declare conflict and step out of the meeting. And if someone could just let me know when this item is finished, that would be great.
Thank you, councillor Newton. I'll wait for the, I'll wait for Georgie to advise us when you have left the meeting and we can start the meeting once again.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'll take things and present.
Mr Boyle, just one moment. I just want confirmation that councillor Newton has left the building.
Councillor Newton has left the meeting.
Thank you. Over to you. Thank you, Mr Boyle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Messina. Yes, this property is at two O five Smith Street in Thornbury. It's a corner lot. It's on the corner of Comus Grove and Smith Street. It's a residential area, the site and surrounds within the general residential zone Schedule Two of the Darabin Planning Scheme. What we have us before us is an application to remove the existing dwelling from the site and construct three brand-new dwellings. The dwellings are laid out in a an attached form. They're all double-story. All three dwellings have their sort of their pedestrian frontage to Smith Street. Dwellings one and two also provide vehicular access direct to Smith Street. Dwellings one and two provide three-bedroom accommodation and dwellings three will have two bedrooms and access for vehicles off Comus Grove. And dwellings one and two have two car parking spaces each, which accords with the planning scheme and dwelling three just the one space. Private open space and living spaces internal to the dwellings are all at ground level, so it's a fairly conventional layout. Notice of the application was undertaken with signs on the site and letters to adjoining and adjacent properties and six objections were received. Now, in the end, this was an application that changed quite a bit during the course of the application process. Different designs were put forth, different layouts. Um, different designs were put forth, different layouts, different car parking arrangements. Uh, there was even a proposal with zero parking, uh and that was what's received most of the objections. Following that initial uh advertising process, what's called a section fifty-nine A amendment was put through to council, which um dealt with some of the officer and the resident issues on that car parking um side of things particularly. So now we do have car parking, as I mentioned, two spaces each for dwellings one and two and one space for dwelling three. Um, so that's a good outcome um in terms of responding to those issues. On top of that, officers have undertaken, you know, a holistic assessment of the proposal against the planning scheme. Um, it's been determined there is a good level of compliance with um the planning scheme. You'll note in the report dwelling three slightly uh reduced front setback, but it's the most furthest dwelling from the adjacent neighbours, being the very corner dwelling. Um, and then there's also a slight area of non-compliance with solar access to the private open space of dwelling three also. But on the whole, um, a pretty good development for a site that's a little bigger than most in the street, particularly on that side of Smith Street, so can accommodate three relatively, you know, terrace-like dwellings. Um, so it's recommended for approval. There aren't a huge amount of conditions, which speaks to the level of compliance. Um, and that's all I've got to say on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Boyle. Um, councillors, are there any questions to the officers? Councillor McCarthy.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Um, just, there's a reference in the report to the option to include a condition to protect the um sunlight to the the solar panels on the property to the rear uh to the south. Um, just wanting to understand um from Mr uh Boyle's presentation there, I I couldn't see a condition of that nature. Is that, is that a condition that councillors would need to add um to the existing set of conditions?
Let me just open the plans through you, ma'am Messina. Just wanna verify the location of those panels.
Through you, madam mayor, I might just jump in on that question. So the condition refers to um protecting the solar panels uh through a condition requiring no canopy planting. Sorry, no canopy planting over the height of three point five metres adjacent to the southern boundary. So I'll just cross-reference that to the landscaping plan condition to to confirm that whether that condition has been included in that landscaping plan condition. It is, it is con- it is included at recommendation, recommended condition three A that deals with the solar panels and not having a greater height at three point five metres. So I believe that answers your question, councillor McCarthy. Thank you.
Thank, thanks very much.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, councillors? As there are none, um we will hear now two submitters. Councillors, we have one submitter on behalf of the applicant this evening. Um, we have either Anthony or Vito that's going to address the planning committee meeting. Anthony, I'm assuming you're going to address the planning committee meeting?
Yes, that's correct. Hi, how are you guys?
Good evening. Um, you have three minutes. Thank you, Anthony.
Ah, cool. Uh, good evening, councillors, and thanks for the opportunity um to speak in favour of this development tonight. Um, yeah, as Joel mentioned first up, we we um, it's fair to say we worked fairly closely with council officers to achieve a good development outcome for this corner property. The development achieves high compliance with clause fifty-five, uh high compliance with council's good design code and has responded favour- favourably to key objective concerns initially raised. Um, I think Joel mentioned that where there were a couple of, we had a couple of goes at uh the design of this application. And I think um this application was lodged in December twenty twenty. Um, it's approximately two months after the good design code was adopted by council. Um, and the original proposal was a was a more period design uh with each dwelling having car parking. Um, and in response to councillor's file letter and the new good design code at that time, um and obviously the willingness to work with council officers, we had amended the application to have a modern design. And I don't know why we removed the car parking, which was, which essentially is why we showed ourselves in the foot and probably why we're here today, because um all the objective concerns pretty much were about the the non-car parking for the three dwellings. Um, and in doing so, that that um that application or that that um those plans were advertised and we received si- six objections. So for us, it was a no-brainer to um amend the application to include car parking for each of the dwellings. Um, and we also amended some of the the plans to ensure that no overshadowing was caused to the neighbours to the to the east and south. Um, as a result, the application was re-advertised and no additional um objections were were received. And I think no one's here tonight as well speaking against the application. Um, the application was referred internally to council's um infrastructure department, E S D officer, urban designer, transport management and tree management unit, who have no uh objection with the proposal. I think what what should have been mentioned or what hasn't been mentioned is, which is a major factor in what we have designed, is the site is actually made up of three property titles. Um, and it is a larger property than what's surrounding. So essentially, what we've done is we've proposed one dwelling per lot. Um, and if you've got access to the plans or if we can bring the plans up, we can see in the site context plan that um hatched in red are the actual property titles. So um, and if we compare the size of each lot to the single fronted dwellings in that context, we're actually, what we're proposing is not unreasonable, um as, you know, a a dwelling has a right to property title.
Thank you, Anthony. It's time. Thank you, Anthony. I'm so sorry. That's time. That's your three minutes. Thank you very much.
Can I at least, can I at least ask if you can support the application?
You can say that. Thank you, Anthony. Um, councillors, do we have a motion? Councillor McCarthy.
I'm hap- happy to move the officer's recommendation, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, I saw your ha- and I saw your hand up, councillor Reni. Um, I'm assuming you I I can't see, I've got back to the gallery view. I'm sorry, councillors. Councillor Reni, uh you're you're going to be seconding this. Yes, great, thank you. Councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak to it?
Um, thanks, ma'am. Look, happy to speak in favour of this. Um, this is in in my ward and um I'm very familiar with the the location and uh and some of the issues that the um applicant has had to address. Um, and it is interesting to note the source of the objections being largely about the car parking provision and understandably so because of the nature of the the corner and the location there. Um, there's obviously some um effort that's gone, been gone to by our officers and I want to thank them for their work in seeking to get the best outcome here. Um, because this is an unusual site. It has um some limitations. And I think o- on, given that it is provided for this sort of development in this location, um we need to be cognizant of that fact, um that the uh the the current planning arrangements do provide for this. Um, but that's not without its challenges. And it is fair to say that um the solar access is something that I've looked at closely. Um, not just the solar to the um adjoining property, uh their solar panels, but also the solar onsite to the property. Um, so the actual um solar into the properties themselves. Um, and one of the things that's really important here is that when we approve uh developments of this configuration, that we ensure that the internal amenity um to the properties is of the highest standard that we would expect. And if not, we condition it um to uh to try to achieve that outcome. So that's what we have here. Um, so, ma'am, on that basis, I'm happy to support this. I note that there were six objections. Um, they haven't been withdrawn, but they were largely around the car parking issues which have been addressed, as I can understand it, from the officer's report today. And on that basis, I'm willing to support it. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Reni.
Happy to reserve. I think councillor McCarthy's covered a lot.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? I now put this item to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Reni, councillor Han- oh, that's been passed unanimously, noting that councillor Dimitri Artis has left um the meeting. Thank you. Um, the planning committee has decided to support the application and issue a notice of decision to grant a planning permit subject to conditions. This decision is not final. An objector can appeal the decision and the applicant can appeal any conditions of VCAT. The process of the appeal is subject to timeframes detailed on the documentation to be sent to the objector and the applicant. Thank you very much for your attendance. Oh.
Uh, ma'am, I I wanted to get in early before the next item. I'll let you finish this item, sorry.
Okay, sorry, I put you saw your hand up. Apologies. So, um, good evening. Sorry, um, I'll just finish that off. Uh, the process of appeal is subject to timeframes detailed on the doc- documentation to be sent to the objector and the applicant. I'd like to thank all submitters and all objectors this evening attending on this cold, cold blast of the evening. And um thank you for, once again, for your attendance to the planning committee. I'd like to thank officers for their detailed thorough report, not only in the reports themselves, but also in the presentation. Councillor Hannah, did you want to move the next item? Is that why you put your hand up?
Um, I apologize, ma'am. Look, I um, when you asked earlier for any conflicts, I didn't, didn't um see any obvious conflicts. But having looked um in more detail at the wording of of the recommendation, I I think there may be a perceived conflict in in relation, a general perceived conflict in relation to my work in the Department of Environment, uh land, water and planning. So it's probably best that I sit out for the next item.
Great. And I can I, can I now ask um Rachna to also, thank you noted councillor Hannon, can I ask Rachna to um invite councillor Newton back into the meeting?
She's back.
Thank you. Um, and could you please kindly advise me when um councillor Hannon leaves?
Councillor Hannon has left.
Thank you. Thanks, Georgie. Um, councillors, item number five point three is the CASB Elevating E S D Stage Two Planning Scheme Amendments. Um, we will now ask the officers to pre- present a briefing to the committee.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to introduce my colleague, Alia Slamet, um who is acting coordinator of strategic planning. He'll introduce this item and answer your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, councillors. So Darabin has been working with the Council Alliance for Sustainable Built Environment, known as CASB, in partnership with thirty councils across Victoria to improve environmentally sustainable development policy in the, excuse me, in the planning scheme. This is called the Elevating E S D Targets Planning Project. Stage one of the project involving establishing the technical base and drafting the new policy has been completed. We're now at stage two, which involves a planning scheme amendment process to implement the new policy. Advocacy to the state government is required because of the pioneering nature of the policy, which we expect will aim higher than the state government's forthcoming E S D policy reforms. Consultation with community will take place as part of the statutory planning scheme amendment process, which will allow all submissions from community to be properly documented and considered. It's recommended that council join the collective action of CASB and the group of councils by signing the M O U, the memorandum memorandum of understanding to partake in stage two, progressing with a planning scheme amendment to prepare and publicly exhibit the proposed updated E S D planning policy, participating in joint advocacy to Victorian government ministers and participating in formal community awareness raising communications activities centrally led by CASB on behalf of the partner councils. In doing so, council will be supporting its commitment to taking firm action on climate change and improving the design of development on private land. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions to the officers, councillors? Councillor McCarthy.
Ma- ma'am, it's just if if we have an indication of the thirty-one councils, how many um so far have um signed on to the process? If we have an update on that one.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy, through the mayor. Currently, approximately half, I understand, have signed on. Um, most councils are still um progressing with taking these items to the chambers. So um I think this week, uh there are a number of councils and even next week. So hopefully by the end of June, we'll have a firm understanding of how many councils have signed on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any further questions? Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor McCarthy.
Happy to move the officer's recommendation, ma'am.
Uh, second, councillor Reni, I saw your hand. Um, councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak to it?
Um, thank you. It would be, give me great pleasure to to speak to this motion. And I want to start off by thanking the work and initiative of our officers in being involved in the really important work with CASB to give some context. And I've had the benefit of um hearing about this project from uh its very first inception, which was um some uh in in fact, I think it might even be a couple of years ago now. Um, certainly the work of CASB is deeply connected with the work um through the greenhouse alliances. And I'm on the, on the chair of the Northern Alliance for Greenhouse Action. So we've been wa- watching this project develop and evolve um very closely because this is part of the missing piece that that sits within the planning scheme about how we can lift the standards towards those zero-carbon aspirations that we have for our planning environment. Um, to give councillors some context, um this is a, it's a bit like the, it's a bit like VECO in the, in some respects in the sense that it requires collaboration of a whole range of councils to work together towards a common aspiration. The difference here is that this is not about our operations. This is actually about our ability to influence um and in fact, control and mandate certain things when it comes to the built environment and the planning environment on private land. As councillors may recall, we have previously gone through a collective process around um E S D standards. And what this piece of work does is brings that to the whole next level. Um, you might, councillors may recall, there's been discussion about a zero-carbon planning scheme amendment. Um, there's been other terms that have been used as well. This is the the detailed piece of work um that gets us to that next stage. And really, to be frank, councillors, that, you know, the clock is is the critical thing here. We want to get uh a ministerial sign-off on on this. We want to obviously sign on as part of the M O U and we want to progress this work as quickly as possible because the sooner we get the planning scheme amendment in place in the way that our officers have worked on it, um the sooner we can enforce the sorts of sustainable outcomes that we know are good for, not only for our planet, our built environment, um but also for the livability of of properties going forward. So I really endorse the work that's gone into this. Um, thank our officers, um and all the officers, in fact, across some of the thirty-one councils that are involved in this collective action. Um, and really hope that that at the state level that the minister gives us um the go-ahead um because it has been a difficult process. It is a process that is council-led. Um, but it is a process where councils are doing the detailed work to try to um lift that aspiration in response to the climate emergency. And and it can only deliver great outcomes um for both our community and also our action on climate change as well. So once again, thank you and happy to endorse it.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Reni.
Thank you, ma'am. A very significant thank you to all staff and others in different councils involved in this work. If there's ever been a time when I think we appreciate what it would be like to live in a home that didn't need gas and lots of electricity, uh now is that time with gas shortages and electricity prices going up. That future is possible and this is a step towards that future. Um, so I commend it to everyone. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Reni. Are there any further speakers? I look forward, thank you for, I just want to echo what my couns- fellow councillors have said in relation to the collective thank yous of this much anticipated work. And I also look forward to a future without gas and electricity, especially with the economic climate that we're escalating in. Councillors, um I now put that motion to the vote. Um, all those in favour? Just note that that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Councillor, can I please ask you to re-invite councillor Hannon back into the meeting?
Yes.
Ma'am Messina, we're just waiting for him to join.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to item number six, other business. Ma'am, given the nature of the further business to attend.
Mayor, given the nature of the further business to attend, I wonder if we could keep going because I think councillor Hannon would be very comfortable with that.
I was going to say, okay, item number six, Other Businesses, oven 6.1, General Plan, Planning Information Schedule, VCAT Applications. Is there a move of the recommendation? Councillor Williams is the mover. Councillor Greco is the speaker. Councillor Williams, would you like to speak to the item? No. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak to the item? No. All those in favour? So I should have said, are there any other speakers? I'm assuming no. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. I note that councillor Hannon has just entered the, entered the meeting. Councillor, did you vote on that last item just for the purposes of documentation?
Yeah, sorry, I was listening and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. Noted. Thank you. Item number seven, Consideration Reports Could Be Confidential, There Are None. Item number eight, Close of Meeting, not beating, meeting. Councillors, as there's no other business to consider this evening, I'd like to declare that the meeting finished, planning committee meeting ceased and is closed at 7:50pm. Thank you for your attendance and I look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you.